I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please take the roll.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Los Liger.
Here.
Manson.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
All right, and Jess's absentee office.
All right, do we have any additions or approval of the agenda for the seat?
Second.
Any discussion? And none will vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Here.
Brenneman.
Yeah.
Manson. Los Liger.
Yes.
All right, do we have, uh... That's it?
Here, yes, on this one.
Yeah, so... Uh, do we have a motion or approval for the minutes from the August 1st meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from August 1st meeting.
And the second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not? Well, vote. Los Liger.
Yes.
Manson.
Yes.
Brenneman. Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right. Do we have motion or action on the bills submitted to be paid?
Let's go through.
Any discussion? I have one. Uh, the fast signs, I thought we were getting those paid for, and we have to pay fast signs or we're gonna get reimbursed?
Yes. So, we have to pay for the monument signs and then we get reimbursed with the hazard mitigation grant.
Okay. This year, a couple of years?
We already got a check from them.
Oh, we already got a check?
And what, trying to pay that, but yeah.
Awesome.
Yep.
No, that's the next line down. There's three welcome signs, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty. And we'll get reimbursed for those. Uh, repairs to the billboard, that was the one that was in pretty tough shape. Craig?
Yeah, we're actually gonna probably budget dish next year again for a repair of another one.
Okay.
They're pretty old, boards are rotting and stuff like that.
All right. Did I see anything else in there that I wanted to ask you about? Motion, the second, no other discussion? Not? Well, vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Manson.
Yes.
Los Liger. All right. We're up to public comments. Anybody that has anything they'd like to discuss? Limit up to five minutes. Items not on the agenda. Nobody's clamoring. Okay, I gotta get down to the next spot. Here's another handy. Takes a while sometimes. All right, we'll move down to Laura. Report on the summer rec program.
All right. Well, I'm Laura Johnson. I think this was my seventh year. I took the summer off of doing the parking rec program, but back this year, it's a great, um, summer. We had one inclement weather day, but we didn't even have to cancel. Uh, we just held it under the shelter. Um, the program was held this year, July 6th to the 28th, just because of the four kind of messed with the dates a little. Um, we had eighty-five kids registered, first through sixth grade, and I mean, they weren't always all there on the same day, but we had, did have eighty-five kids total who came to the program throughout that time. Um, kids would make crafts and play games during their allotted time slot, and our assistants this year were Emma Reich, Andrew Reich, and Kathy O'Hare. They did an awesome job in the program. Um, the end of the year party was a really big success. We did it a little different this year. Um, the last year's director, I think, lined up the Zoom mobile, which was kind of cool, so that came out. We had a big pizza party and games, and the kids had a great time. Um, and after all, I think we do have one we're going to yet to submit, but otherwise we stay under budget. It was just a great summer. We appreciate you funding that for the kids, um, because I, I get a lot of good feedback. I haven't heard anything else but, you know, positive comments, so if you guys have concerns or questions, feel free.
I have a couple of people telling me they really enjoy it, and I kind of get firsthand because they're relative kids, they're neighbors of mine, so I can get a firsthand update throughout the season, so...
Yeah, they're great.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any questions for Laura? Thank you so much for doing that. Great, uh, great program. We hope to maybe see you again next year. All right. Next up, we have Leah Johnson with the report on the 2023 Jeffrey Days.
All right, you guys should have gotten something in your packets.
We did.
So, for Little Miss Hartford Padment, it was fifteen girls, which is the highest we've ever had. Last year was ten. So, uh, we, even the first year, I think, the highest we've ever had is seventeen, so it was highest that we've ever had. Abby McMahon, she won, and she had it last weekend. The movie that we played was the new movie, The Puss in Boots, the last which was played. We had attendance right around that fifty number, about the same as last year. Last year was right around twenty-five to fifty, but this year, I think, we held them a little bit longer. We had a lot of people that actually stayed till the end of the movie, and a lot of times we see that, uh, nine thirty, ten o'clock, right when, probably half hour, hour into it, you see a lot of people pack up and leave. This year, we didn't see quite people stick it out throughout the whole movie, so... And then the car show, we actually had a perfect night for the car show. We had a hundred registered. We had eight that were listed as no judge, and then we actually had several of them that didn't even come up and register. Last year, we had ninety-eight, so it's up slightly. Uh, for burnout, about the same. We had fourteen registered this year, sixteen registered last year, and it was kind of keep it within that same number though, because otherwise we're gonna run out of time daily. Um, as far as crowd participation, it was huge. I don't know if any of you guys were there, but there was a lot of smoke in the air. We did get some drone coverage of it too. That's pretty cool. Um, Friday night's entertainment was the Twelve Seventies Band. I think next year, what we're kind of looking at is maybe the same band, but we're gonna move it to be more, a little bit earlier than the car show. Have them play up into the burnout, and then after the, once the burnout kicks out, I think we'll just have the band. Otherwise, they're sitting around for the length of time, and then when they come back, for half hour, two forty-five minutes to play, so... Just in accordance of their time and everything, I think we're just looking at maybe having just music play through our sound system, so, for next year. Vendors, the numbers, um, were pretty close to the same as last year. I didn't actually pull a total number, uh, but as far as how many we actually laid out, we did try something a little different with the food vendors, making it more of like a food court area, and we did get some positive feedback on that, so probably look at doing something similar to that. Having the electrical kind of upgraded a little bit there too, that I think helped in that respect too. We didn't have quite as many, um, home up of one area. Five K was also about the same as last year. I believe they reported about twenty-four runners last year. I think I had thirty that were reported, as far as runners. Trade also about the same, forty-four entries this year, thirty-eight last year, so it was a good turnout, a little bit more. Um, stage entertainment was very similar. Uh, we did kind of move that up a little bit too. We had our collegiate, you know, like disposal. The band was not able to participate this year as far as the stage entertainment, but it's more of their schedule. They just got back from Florida. They also had quite a few of them going to Brookings, doing international trips, so it kind of just didn't work out for them this year, but the West Central Choir actually was able to do, kind of fill in in her place. She said that like a choir type of camp, so that was able to showcase kind of what they did during camp. Phil Baker is always really good for the kids. He always sends back just a comment how glad he is to be part of our event and how much fun he has added, so every year, he always sends us this, and he bounced it way afterwards. And we moved everybody from the stage area, we moved them to like a flatbed that way the amplifier was open, so when the Saturday night entertainment came in, they didn't have anybody crossing over each other, so then we had Sioux Falls Temple Band, played for a short amount of time. The rain kind of hampered that, so they didn't get to play the full time, but they did get to play a good chunk, and then the Pony Creek Cowboys finished it up and also played during the community supper. Mr. Twister, he's busy all day. He never went without having a line or day coloring, um, or color B face painting. I think every time you look over there, they're at least five to ten deep, so kids are always lined up to get that done. Um, our inflatables also stayed pretty busy this year. We had water, so a lot of the kids were super excited about that, get the paint a little more, so that helped. And then Great Life also brought out a snake course, which I don't know if you guys have ever seen that, but it's kind of like a little kid golf practice type of thing, so it's kind of cute. Baby prom was hilarious. We had lots of parents and lots of people up the ground encouraging babies, so that was actually kind of comical. And then our Decoting Kids Pedal Pole, he actually had a higher number of people do it this year, but we also kind of changed that up a little bit. We moved it up in time, so it was right after Phil Baker, and then that way the people, before we were doing it at three, I think we lost a lot of the kids throughout the day, so I think doing it right after Phil Baker just kind of encouraged more participation. Um, let's see, community supper hosted by the Color Guard, and then Sunshine provided the food. That also seemed to bring a pretty good group, especially with a little bit of rain in the forecast, so they did about the same as they've done in the past. Um, Saturday Night Park Concert, Other Nature was not kind to us. She did give us the rain, so it did slow it down, but surprisingly, we did actually have quite a few that still come out, come out underneath the trees, still enjoy the night. Brandon was able to continue to play because he was underneath our amplifier, so perfect place for him. They had a blast. Um, it gave good comments back to the community. Beer sales, our tips were down just a little. We're at eleven twenty-two this year. Last year, we were fourteen oh-two. However, beer sales, we were down a little, but not as much as you would expect, especially with Saturday night, not having as much, but we had an amazing Friday night. This year, we were eighty-one twenty-two. Last year was eighty-four eighty, so only about three, four hundred bucks, so it's a pretty big difference considering the fact that you had a much smaller crowd Saturday. But had a full crowd Saturday, I think we might have sold out some of our beer in then. Um, beer costed us about thirty dollars more though. Last year, it was twenty-nine seventy-two. As you can see, it's twenty-nine forty this year, and our beer profit, I've been down that few hundred bucks because of the, or the difference in sales, fifty-one eighty-one this year, fifty-five oh-seven last year, so... And then we always wrap it up with worship on Sunday morning, and they actually had a really good turnout, and he says that the numbers don't matter. They go up every year, so I think as people get used to seeing that on Sunday morning, that number comes up. And then they also happen to, um, make goodies, so a lot of times they say it doesn't throughout the mornings, so... That's a lot of talking, sorry. That's a summary though. Any questions that you guys have for us?
So, I know we've talked about this, and I think you met with some of the downtown people. Any thought ever of moving back downtown with the council?
If you can give me more people, but then you don't have the amplifier either, so either had rain on Saturday night, Brandon Jones would be done. Either that or you had committee running up there to hold a tarp over him like you did the last time he was downtown. I told Brandon, it's his fault to have that rain for a second last time. Brandon, January days, Brandon played, so... A lot of it's just volunteer and time. We just don't have the manpower to work to different locations. And also, we don't have the problems. I mean, we have not had any problems since we've been in the park. In the last three years, we were downtown, it was either a police thing or an ambulance thing. So, I mean, we also have to take that into account when it's a community event.
I get it, but we have businesses that are asking, you know, they're, they're kind of cut out of any chance of benefiting from the event, that's it.
However, we've had businesses around the entire town of Hartford that have said that over many years.
Yeah.
Since we catered to two businesses downtown and never did anything to stay up for the go there. When the bowling alley was open, I know they had comments back then too, so you can't make everybody come.
Oh, I get it. I get it. I'm just...
And when you're only a small committee of twelve people, and we run for four days straight, nonstop, it's a lot of work.
That's a great point. Is there, what we call seeing those twelve committee members, or is there, where can I find that information?
I can actually send it. It's, um, do you send out their, our meeting notes when you get it? Because I know that I send meeting minutes, and you guys are, I think, parents.
We follow them for the auditor, but we can send them out.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important for this council and the community to know.
Maybe not, so we see those people, we can tell them.
They don't get any credit, is what I'm trying to say.
But a lot of people don't want credit, so... You don't do it for the thank yous or the credit. We do it for the community that we live in.
Doesn't get you sensationalized, but at least, at least we know.
At least we know.
All their names should be in our meeting minutes, so I know it's not...
It's one of them, correct?
I think our website maybe has officers.
One of them is correct, but not all members.
We need to, sometimes we need a reason to tell them these, you know, figure out, you know.
A reason why to tell them you're doing a good job.
Yeah, because usually we're picking on them, but something, I love it. That's coming.
How do you guys pick the...
Twenty-nine years, they don't matter.
How do you guys pick the, because to be a food vendor there, is there any upfront costs for the food vendors, or is it first come, first served, or how do you guys pick the food vendors?
We do have a vendor cost, yes, and if you're a food vendor, it depends on if you need electricity or not. We actually have a vendor form to fill out, whether or not you're for-profit, nonprofit, electric, non-electric, and that goes for all of the vendors.
All, with the people selling their homemade goods and all that, okay.
We're one of the lowest in the area. We've compared it to like, say, your T, your Brookings, your other different vendors, or other different events that happen, so we've kind of scoped out some of their vendor forms, and I know we're one of the lowest, so... And I think we're the only three car show.
Right, I put my golf cart in this year.
Did you?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't make.
What?
Um, and then like your beer tips, just out of curiosity, where do those beer tips, who does that money go to?
Goes back into the account. Yeah, everything is, goes, everything that we make goes right back into our account. Like, when I say we're volunteers, that's, I mean, a hundred percent volunteers. We take a lot of time to put, and a lot of pride to put on a summer event for the community. And most of the people, I mean, there's some people that are businesses, but the majority of the people are just your outreach people that just want to be part of it.
All right, any other questions for Leah?
Thank you, thanks, dude.
All right, I'm gonna have to check my daughter since she was in an accident. Thanks, guys.
All right. All righty, good enough. Next up is hearing's applications agreement resolutions ordinances. First is resolution twenty-two, twenty-two dash nine, street maintenance fee for twenty-twenty-four. It's in your packet. The history is, we started doing this four years ago. We tacked on, uh, so much of running foot for street maintenance, snow removal, only street related things.
Basically, yeah, so our flurry, I mean, doesn't directly go, but helps offset the cost. So, story sale, Meg watering, gravel, any street maintenance, you can put it towards that cost, so...
Last year, we were at a dollar and a half, and the recommendation this year is to remain the same. You just need to adapt, adopt a new resolution.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two, twenty-two dash one.
Second. Any more discussion? Hearing, none will vote. Chris?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
We'll go first major once in a while, just to make sure that I'm, I'm paying attention. All right, when you see all the DSS levels, dash, sorry, if I get down to the next deal.
My point of order maybe on that? Um, so it's resolution twenty-three dash twenty.
Oh, it was different than...
In our meeting, uh, agenda, it says resolution twenty-two, twenty-two dash nine.
Oh my goodness. It's twenty. We're way past nine, so...
Yeah, and it's twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah. That's probably last year's, last year's money.
Just a point of order there that it's resolution twenty-three dash twenty.
We'll put down the general, but it is, yeah, twenty-twenty-three dash twenty.
We have twenty, twenty-three dash twenty here.
Yeah.
Sorry, I shouldn't read it off the paper. I should read it off that computer.
No, that's, that's hilarious. We have to take care.
Motion, agree.
Our motion is, thank you, thank you, Mark.
Resolution's right. Just had on the agenda, all.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's a lot of...
We're all vocal, nobody. All right. Next up, first meeting, order in seven forty-six, Rural Service District designation for partial sixty-four, seven, zero, five. This is also in the packet. This is the, uh, land south and west of the Three Eight Seven Exchange. We annexed it in. They're asking for Rural Service District designation. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Make a motion to approve order, order seven forty-six for Rural Service District for partial sixty-four, seven oh five.
Second.
Second. Sean, second. Any discussion? Hearing, none will vote. Keel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Los Liger? That's a lot easier. I should do it that way. All right. All right, next up, special event application, West Central After Prom Bean Bag Tournament. Hey, that's one of the hinges here.
You don't have a junior, do you?
Yes, I do. I was, I believe they're not Mercer's a junior this year, so...
Oh, man.
I'm Angie Johnson, and this is Shelley. Uh, we're here just, we had turned in a special event permit. We'd like to host a beanbag tournament as a fundraiser for the after prom, um, this year in the fall, um, around October twenty-first is the date we were thinking of that has a lease number of other events going on, and we'd like to do it outside on Main Street and wanted to know if we could possibly block off a section. I don't know if any of you have ever participated with junior achievement with the beanbag tournament. They used to have something along those lines is what we were thinking.
Yep.
I don't know if you guys need other information.
I don't believe so. I think recently, I saw your application and stuff. Um, I didn't see, I should have looked. What day of the week is that? Is that Saturday?
It's a Saturday, yeah.
How do you sign up for the tournament?
We're gonna have, um, people sign up ahead of time if they want to or at the day of the tournament. Um, I've been looking into online options. I haven't found anything real easy, but we're hoping to have an online option and a paper option, so use social media to sort of get the word out and, um, do it that way.
Craig, any issues for the city? Set the barricades out Friday night and then put them out on the streets Saturday?
Yeah, we'll have Walter for me.
All right, any actions from the council?
I make a motion to approve the special event application for the West Central After Prom Bean Bag Tournament.
Second.
Any other discussion? Not? Well, vote. Los Liger?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you guys for coming. Twenty-five minutes. I hope we didn't have you too long. I hope supper's not burning on the stove.
There you go. Good. Thank you guys. Please happy attendance.
All right, we move down to reports. Hartford area fire and rescue. The report is in your packet. Submitted by the chief. Can read through that. As a side note, we have a, Cindy Manson is our council rep. We have a meeting scheduled with the fire department or some of the members of the fire department this coming Monday morning, the twenty-first. Cindy's gonna attend, I'm gonna attend. Craig, we'd like to have you attend if you could. Monday morning, the twenty-first.
Monday morning?
Monday morning.
Monday morning.
Monday. What'd I say?
Oh, I can't believe it's a Monday morning.
Absolutely. Hey, swimming's done.
In, uh, at the fire station.
Monday morning.
Monday morning.
Use your tactic.
Man.
That was my doing, sorry.
That's Cindy's deal.
Yeah, we have to get moving.
Yeah, get at it. Any other council members? We don't want to bowl over a quorum, but if anybody else would like to attend, we sure, uh, welcome anybody that would like to attend. But Craig, we could, if, if that works out for you, we'd like to have you come.
I'll be there.
Because you can kind of wear both hats for us.
I've been having meetings with a lot of the, or most or all, of the groups that we provide funding for.
You know, it's, I'm just looking at that report. I don't know what their training could have been any better.
Oh, kidding.
Yeah. With what happened. What occurred?
I'd also like to mention, it has a public safety day on there on August twenty-sixth. I missed it last year, but I heard it was a very cool, fun day, so, especially for kids. Um, so just a reminder, uh, if you can make it.
Is that on the city website?
Probably not. It's been on over now.
I don't know. I don't know if it's on the marquee that we, Jenny, they call her. I don't know if anybody's notified her.
I think I saw it on the marquee.
Okay. I don't know if it's on the website.
All right, and I'll send you my, so if any of you'd like to attend, just maybe shoot, send your myself, uh, notes, so we know you're coming. All right? Yeah, Monday morning, Monday.
I mean, I feel like you're kind of, you know, picking on the small business owners. I can't attend Monday morning.
You own the company.
You're not up yet.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not, I'm not buying that.
Coffee.
All right, let's move on to the next one. Chamber and Economic Development Director, Amy. I know your report's in here.
Yep, my information's in the packet. However, I did schedule a ribbon cutting, I believe, yesterday for black tie components. I did send out an email. It will be Wednesday, uh, September twenty-seventh at five PM, so if you're able to attend, we greatly appreciate it. Um, so that's the chamber side. On the economic development side, uh, in the packet, it states that our intern is no longer with us as of last Friday. She had to go back to college, unfortunately. She did a wonderful job for us. Um, and then also scheduled today was, um, a hard hat tour for the, um, HIDF members, uh, for next Wednesday possibly. We're still confirming it, but that is the date they are looking for at seven-thirty in the morning.
Um, Maple Pass.
Maple Pass, excuse me.
What date is that? Twenty-third?
I believe so.
Yeah. Seven-thirty.
My person here. What do we got going on at six?
Oh, my. All right, anything else? Any questions for Amy? All right, thank you. We'll move on to city engineer report. Michael?
Good evening, everyone. Um, just general engineering note, we have updated capital from a plan, cost estimates for that, provided them to the city. I had a budget time, um, and then following budgetable, um, did a finalized report, or finalized capital from a plan for twenty-twenty-two, um, that we can adopt at that time.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four? What did I say? Two?
Two.
I'm gonna draw one, sorry.
Boy, there's date problems. Wow.
Somebody's got an auto timing.
All right.
Um, on the water resource recovery facility, as much as last, have a few packages that currently out for bid. We expect to see those, um, have bid for those next Tuesday, the twenty-second, afterwards, or if you, the city has updated cost of years accordingly. Um, and then additionally, there's a couple of bid packages that we've got to double off in bidding, or ask for consumption to delay out bidding, and those will be bid later this call. Um, a big one in that is the utility message. Moving down to the Highway Thirty-Eight Water Main Extension, wrapping up updates to the construction happens tonight, making sure those comply with the SRF requirements. The city has, um, a date for that, and then we'll give that to the DA and R D review, uh, and then following that, we'll put out a bid for construction next summer. Then on Western Avenue, sixty percent of the site's haven't completed, and we're just doing internal Q and Q C before...
Now, this makes it a lot tougher project to approve with those kind of numbers, it really does. Because our grant was...
Hundred and thirty thousand?
Hundred and thirty thousand.
So we're three hundred out of pocket barring nothing else happening.
I see a splash pad for four hundred thousand dollars. Not a lot more people would lose.
If we don't start construction or bid this before the end of the year, we lose our grant, correct?
Yep.
And then we don't have anybody on this council that remembers that there was that one project where there was that hundred percent cost over on gravel.
Thanks for the distribution. I just, it's, I don't think it's worth the... I think there's a lot of other things we can do for three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And maybe there's a better way to plan down the road, but...
I think the hard part with it is, and I agree with that, the hard part is that the kids do have it, you know, it would make that just tie in better, but like you said, there's no sidewalk there and it comes at a very big cost. And it seems like the, the cost of it's outweighing potentially the importance of it.
I think right now, I mean, maybe there'll be another time will be better. Or another grant, or another path.
If you look at the, if you look at Google Maps and you look at where the bike trail currently deadheads on Fighter, it would seem to me if the natural flow for the bike trail would need to go up the western side of Fighter. And then math, which isn't really a street that's used by anyone, could that become a part of the bike trail? I don't know where it dumps out at, but anyway, it's, it's just difficult. That always is a challenge all the way to the west.
It's hard with the elevator in there.
Because that has been, it's relatively dead there. Quiet, you know, but except for those few seasonal times, so.
Rather see a sidewalk, put on the, you know, on Main on the west side there where the sidewalk ends right past the bridge on the west side.
I think it'd be awesome.
Yeah, if you bring a sidewalk north and then you can tie it, I mean, I, I'm just spitballing here, but...
I think when we looked at the, you know, the plan for the future in that area, I think once we get to the point where we can develop it all the way to the crack, maybe there's some better option that will materialize or grant or they'll land on it or...
This trial all started when there was the bike and work trial together and so this was their anticipated next phase. So that's kind of started it all, they're rolling. This is the third grant we applied for, two, we had a transportation alternative and a wellmark grant that got turned out of Oregon. So it's, it's been a long process and, and it's, there's been a lot of issues along the way.
What have we spent on this so far? Here we go.
Thirty something.
I'd possibly be like fifteen or something like that.
Can you remind me why we don't go on the south side of the grid?
We discussed that with Danfisk and Parks and it was due to the scope of the grant application, they were going to buy it like across the grid.
Okay, so that's early grant, what do we want?
Yeah.
Do we have east of land all the way through?
We do, but you'd have to build a bridge.
Yeah, that's the...
And that, the bridge would have to be designed similar to the one that's already now at Turtle Creek and that was a hundred and sixty thousand, ten years ago?
Ten fifteen, yeah.
That's ten years.
That was ten years ago.
Add thirty percent to that.
Yeah. I don't know how much you would have it be.
You'd probably go right above the buttons that where the old bridge used to be for that house back in there. It'd be probably a starting point.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure where that is.
Um, so the tree line that's behind Dobbs is, uh, there? If you follow that to the creek, there's an old, um, bridge abutments in there.
It's about a hundred and eighty feet east of Main Street.
We have the property all the way from Main to Fighter.
Yeah, we've got just, we've got an area chunk down by Dobbs's place. And it just goes, it doesn't, it doesn't come up to the creek, so it's just a path in there, what, forty feet wide, something like that? It goes, it was just wide enough to get for future path. And then it goes south out and once it gets to the, where that old bridge is, it kind of goes out to the, like, center of the waterway there and then it shoots up a little bit and then doglegs again and eventually we've got a pretty good sized area in there.
Still have the sidewalk issues that people are concerned with.
I just feel like people are like, we spent half a million dollars by the time we're done with this.
I know when we looked at the...
To get to the empty block on Main.
I know when we looked at the sidewalk issues, even with Danfisk and Parks and that stuff, we talked about stuff. We just figured safety reasons, if you have a crosswalk there at Fighter and get them across there instead of pushing them up to the north. Because that north intersection there, that's a, it's offset intersection to begin with, which makes it dangerous for crossing. And then it's, um, that's a truck route. So we thought it'd be safe for the people down a half a block and put a crosswalk in there. So that's the reason why we came out on the east end there where we did. The other side, we had no choice but to come there because that's the only land we had available. And then we thought, once we got to there, we'd shoot them to the north, put that sidewalk into the north, up to that intersection, then you'd cross at that intersection where... No, it was not now. That was part of the project was to put that sidewalk into the north.
You're talking the one of the west side, yeah, there's not going to be anything on the west side.
No, no, it was just, this was like the next phase for the next part of it, I guess.
And it make the ultimately the best plan? I just don't think it's a good plan right now. I don't know.
Well, council, what would we like to do with this?
We have to vote, are we voting right now?
Well, we need actions first.
We do have the issue, we're still waiting for FEMA approval for a no rise, so if we don't get that, the project kind of deadens in the water too.
I see what you did there.
That's, that's sub twenty twenty two. I'll throw that back in.
Yeah, I, I don't know, you got any indication for your checkouts? You're checking all the time with them.
So when is that approval, Michael? When are we waiting on?
Just, just a decision on, um, if we move forward with bidding or if, if we, you know, complete the plans and you head this on shelf for the next number of years. Um, it's just a path forward. We don't want to spend any more resources from up here.
Correct. Put it on the shelf. Wouldn't spend any more money on that thing.
I don't know, but... Anybody has an appetite for motioning? I don't know.
Well, we have, if, if we don't motion, because what we were going to propose was putting it up for bid. So there's no action taken.
But if you want to put it on the shelf, I, I would like a motion so I can contact the Danfisk and Parks to let them know we'll turn back the grant.
Sure.
So they can put that money back in the coffers for somebody else.
Yeah.
So if the project was within budget, would we do it?
Probably.
So once again, going back to, does it make any sense to take one last hit at this thing, go into the property owners and see, is there any form of compensation that, that they would take in order to do it within budget or close to budget?
No. I got no appetite for that because then the next time we need something, so we just want to get paid.
I was gonna say, the city's never done that before just because you kind of open a can of worms, don't you start...
I think everyone's back to revising plans again and filing them again. It's like our third go around.
It's a word we use, need a lot of precedent.
I make a motion to decline the grant for the bike trail.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bow on.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brennan. Mattson.
Yes.
Wassler. All right. What else you got, Michael?
Uh, in a second. The storm shelter.
You're jumping out of the fire into the fireplace there. You should want to break things down. Well, I think after last meeting's discussion, I like what Teresa put together here in the packet. Her option two on the storm shelter. Uh, turn the grant down, state said it won't hamper our ability to get any grants in the future. Any engineering fees incurred could be submitted.
Yep.
And we would get eighty-five percent of that money paid. Uh, we turned down the grant, we could use the money that we'd already proposed to pay on this, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And direct a smaller wooden and metal concession stand and restroom. Which is easier to swallow than having to spend one point seven million dollars to get an eight hundred and forty dollar grant.
I feel like it's another project that things just spiral because...
This one got away with, the inflation just didn't help this one at all. It just killed this.
No, and, and with the state, you know, basically deciding that we have to upfront all that money, you know, it's not like a, a normal grant where you, you know, if they're going to pay eighty percent, you get that grant money, you know what's coming. But now they're going to make you pay that upfront and then you come back and submit for any overruns, which this has a lot of overruns and we've talked about that. And you may get it or you may not, depends on if they have money left and it depends on if we can meet all their qualifications or whatnot and, you know, it's, are you willing to take that risk? Yeah, that's a lot of money to risk.
One point seven million or something like that to that one.
Fire station, one point six, that's a pretty big building.
Yeah. You can do concession stands.
And that could have been, that could have been a lot less too.
That's what I mean. How's that even...
Well, this is all brick, it's up to us.
It's integrating for the, I believe, two hundred and fifty million.
Yeah, it's a storm rated.
I feel like you should have took the building with the one twenty-five capacity and ran whatever that was.
Yeah, we should maybe get the capacity.
But I mean, how many square feet is this?
I don't remember the last plan.
Yeah, I see.
Something's three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot or something.
That sounds about right. I believe it's five, five square feet per person on the storm shelter area. And you do have some areas that are not, um, that can't be rated for storm shelter just due to openings such as windows for concession. Um, if they're in direct lines type of that. I believe the, um, the total bill comes around eighteen hundred square feet.
I don't know, it's way more than that. Probably all the sudden, I don't know, a square foot.
I said you could take what we were going to spend from the grant and just put up a concession building.
And the gentleman that spoke two weeks ago sounded like that was...
It's one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars a square foot.
How much is that?
One thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars a square foot.
For concrete.
If it's fourteen hundred.
But it sounded like the gentleman over the parking rec board, you did sound like that.
As I said, yeah, I mean, this really just started with, we needed a concession restaurant.
I think it started at three hundred and fifty dollars.
Grant came along and I thought, okay, we can get a bigger building and we thought at that time eighty percent of it paid for, well, not knowing that they're not, they're going to make us upfront the, the money, so, yeah, I just...
Right, so what do you want to do with this one?
I think I'd like to see some concession stands in the bathroom out there, grab more affordable costs.
I, I mean, I don't think we have enough information to do anything about that, but I would like to make a motion to approve option two as recommended.
In a second.
Okay, any more discussion on this?
I think it'd be nice then to get going with what concessions to have around.
I said, we can do some more research to see what we can get.
Yep.
We probably maybe have to park boards, start working on that.
What'd you build the building for out there, Craig?
Uh, we're less than twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Thirty by forty-eight.
Those guys have just materialized, no labor. City labor I've noticed is freely...
We're either going to be playing cards or building buildings, so.
Playing cards?
Whoa, whoa, hold on, hold on. All right, we have a motion as a second to, uh, move forward with option two. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bow on.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wassler, yes. All right, Michael, anything else?
A real quick remark to your question. I recall the original layout, the, our proposed expanded layout between the three inquiries, thirty-two hundred. So.
All right, Michael, anything else?
Nope, that is all.
All right, any other questions for you, for Michael?
Oh, but we just say no.
We're doing good, now if we keep them that mode of budget.
All right, uh, Craig?
Uh, just a couple of highlights or different things in my report. Um, we need to get the concrete moved down here, we'll be getting that laid out. Uh, we got a contractor lined up to pour that curb and that street down there. I did it by report, thanks. So we, once that land got sold, like I said, I have it in my report, but that land got, lot got sold down there. When it got sold, they had the property pins located and the property pin on the southeast corner was actually in the middle of the handicap ramp. So we had to, we had our sidewalk and street basically up against the property. So we have to, we have to move the radius for the intersection down there away from the, so we get the sidewalk in there and everything else in there. So we had to tear out about forty feet of curb and some concrete street and there's, uh, straighten that sidewalk up for another probably fifteen, twenty feet and then put the radius in there for the sidewalk and the curb and the streets. So we tore out the concrete and we'll be getting that put back in, I think this week, so.
That's in your report?
Yeah.
First you was longer, you was like longer it all down.
No, he kind of, I kind of buried it in there, I see now. All right, well done, well done.
So, so here's why, here's, here's why Travis knows about this, because I was driving down Main Street the other day, coming back from City Hall. And I stopped and I thought, what the heck, what are we doing tearing out this side? And I thought it was, I didn't know it was our own guys.
They didn't work my car.
They were not.
Or he calls me and says, they're starting construction though.
Yeah, I figured that.
So they were starting to, yeah. I see the property owner at the golf course, they said, are you starting construction? I said, no, we're not.
Yeah, anyway.
Yeah, so...
Get your stuff off our line.
So, yeah, so we had, we had to move it basically and that's what, uh, we got that tore out today, so we are ready for contractors coming in. I think tomorrow we'll start forming that up. We'll get the curb, the curb and the actual street are all together on that concrete, so that'll get poured first and then he'll come back. We're going to coordinate with the gas company because the gas company still has to move a lot again.
Right, that was my next question.
Before we put sidewalk back in and they tear it out, they're going to come in and get the gas, gas moved and then we'll get sidewalk.
That was my next question.
Yep, so we'll be working, I've actually had calls into the gas company, they're supposed to have a guy come out and look at it and keep moving ahead with the project. So landlords can start planning stuff or whatever they want to do, so.
All right.
Slurry seal, next time move my desk.
All popular things.
ASCO actually got going this morning, um, and what they've been doing looks a hundred percent better than it did last year. Um, the crew's been actually taking some time and making sure things are good. They, um, had their guys go to training on this machine, that stuff all, all winter long and it went, I thought today went really well, so. They get, they'll, tomorrow they'll be up and, uh, they're going to start out on Kelly Drive and then they're going to go up to party and get that done. We're working with the garbage people and that stuff, the pickup services and that stuff, so we can kind of keep on everybody's way and get stuff done here, so.
What time do you think that we have to party?
I'm going to say ten, ten-thirty.
Perfect.
You'll be going.
More importantly, Wendy will be gone.
By ten, I should be gone.
So that's prob, that's what I'm kind of thinking of. Uh, the only other thing in my report is, I was just going to talk about, we got our building down there at the sports complex. We did get the overhead door written today, we got a, one of the springs is a little iffy. We're using a door that used to be right here, so we're, we saved that door and we took it out and that's the door that's going in there for the overhead door. Um, so we, cup, the one spring was a little bit shaky, so we didn't want to take a chance of somebody getting hurt by a boss or something, so we're going to give new springs for it and then we'll have that in and the building will be pretty much complete, so. And that's all I, yeah, eighteen thousand. Well, the nice thing is that's what James did for, before he came to work for us, is he built steel buildings, so. So it went pretty well.
All right.
That's all I got in my report. Somebody has something for me?
Just some of the public buildings, uh, done for now. What's, what's left over at the, at the gatehouse, I guess?
What's that?
What's left? Is there anything?
They need to finish hooking up the AC unit and heater and I've been over there, they got some ductwork to finish. They got the stuff sitting there, but they haven't got it lifted up. They have electricals been pulled, um, that's as far as they're done. Hey, I stop there once a week if not more, then, come on, let's get the thing going, so.
Yes.
And we do have baths at the gatehouse and so that got inspected, we, they're coming out at the end of the month and sealing up the chimneys and stuff and deal and then basically they're, they're still around, they're, we've got some issues with that, so they're going to be sealing all that up to hopefully take care of that issue.
They're here too?
Yes, and they're coming, they're inspecting here tomorrow, just because we had one in the building earlier this spring too. Couple, yeah, they've had a couple. So they're going to recheck in here, yeah, so.
It's part of, uh, our mosquito control.
Mm-hmm. All right, anything else for Craig? Thank you. All right, Karen?
Yeah, my report is in the packet. I don't really have anything to add, just a reminder that deadline to register for the annual conference, if you're interested in going, is the fifteenth of next month, so just let us know at City Hall if you want to go.
Do you go to that, Craig?
Yeah.
And Teresa?
Um, most of the time, I didn't last year, but...
And Karen, you go?
I, I'm not gone.
Maybe Craig and I should go.
It's a good, good conference.
Maybe Craig and I should go. I'll let you know.
Maybe an extra credit, Karen.
All right, any questions for Karen?
Again, I just want to say thanks for putting that, uh, kind of that snapshot of our funds year over year as to where that... I mean, I kind of knew that we had spent a lot of money out of our reserves or waste of our treatment facility, but it was nice to see it. So that's a big, you know, it's a big discrepancy, it's a big difference and so the average taxpayer, I think that might wonder where it's going. So we'll get something to reference, so thanks.
All right, Teresa?
Um, my report's in packages. Why don't we kind of go on over all the projects, just a couple of things to point out. Um, billboard rates, I can't get anybody to call me back to get any quotes on them, I don't know if they're going to talk to a competitor or what. Um, still working on that so we can discuss, but I, at this point, I am talking with a couple of enemies, I think, I think within the next month or so we will have all of the billboards rented out there, so, um, maybe, like I said, going forward, we want to maybe look at first, look at the rates and maybe put them in, you know, January first or whatnot, so then we have a good starting date for it, so that's what we're going to shoot for. Just have discussion this fall and look at that. Um, me and Craig sat down with Damian, um, last week to discuss, you know, a school starting up, the traffic around there, what the safest, you know, options would be. So we talked about, um, a couple of things. He was going to go take him to the school. I don't know if he's met with them yet, but we'll, we'll keep you updated on that, um, because he was going to talk to the school personnel and see if we can find a, a good place for, you know, now that everything's tore out for the teachers to park, a good place to drop off the kids. It, it's going to be a mess. I, I mean, literally, we're just trying to figure out the safest way, you know, um, to kind of get those elementary kids there and back, so we are working with the school on that. Our website, we've got a couple glitches in it, our mass notification, our very first one we tried to set out, we had like twenty-two people signed out. It, it signed out for it and went out to seven, so.
I got it.
Did you? Oh, yeah, I think we saw Travis got, we could see who got it and then, then there was a bunch of errors that didn't get it. So Jenny is working with tech to, to get that straightened out. We also are still working on the fillable forms and just today she was working with the tech on that too, so that we can, all our online forms, we can make them fillable and they can come directly to us a little bit easier for, so it, it's processed, but we're still working on that. Um, and then Amy and I have been working on the EVA grant. There was a, um, you know, we've made it to the second phase and there was kind of a list of additional items we needed to get to them. I think we've gotten everything that we're supposed to get to them, so they wanted that all before the eighteenth and I think today we got our last stuff in, so uh, we should be set to go on our end for moving forward again with that grant. That's about all I have. Any other questions for you?
When do we expect to hear back from the grant? Is that September?
September, yeah. Yeah, so it should be a fairly quick turnaround.
I see you noted Summit Carbon Pipeline.
Yep, so I wanted to give you an update on, on that, so I put that in the packet. Um, probably the, the notable things, um, that have happened with that is it, um, to parry in the news, North Dakota has denied their permit for North Dakota. It sounds like from what I've all read on it that their application was missing a few things that they didn't address, so they're going to address those, resubmit it and then go from there. Um, you know, Minnehaw County passed that ordinance about how it has to be, you know, three quarters of a mile from any municipal boundary, which affects a few properties here. They did pass that, that's enacted. Um, I did hear though Summit's going to try to fight that as well. Uh, what they believe is that the PUC kind of overrules any county ordinance. Whether that is or not, I'm sure it'll end up in court, so I guess we'll see what happens there. Uh, testimony hearings are still scheduled for September here. PUC has them going on next month and then they're supposed to have a final decision date by November, so, on the South Dakota permit, so.
All right.
I saw the Sioux Falls homeowners association was having one. Kind of informational media too of the current pipeline. And I told the board, August, Plunge and Wire.
All right, anything else for Teresa? If not, we'll move on to new business. We have one item, review and approve surplusing an item and I believe it is our bus.
Yep, we've talked about the transit bus. We, um, you know, have made the decision to go ahead and have rocks, um, you know, go with, apply for a grant to get a new bus. We'll figure that into next year's budget, but in order to move ahead with that, the current bus, it's, it's out of commission because it hasn't passed the DOT inspection, so, um, in order to move forward with being able to sell that bus and then we can use those proceeds towards our share. Um, number one, we had to, um, have the state sign off and they have an eighty percent interest in it. I got the paperwork back, they have done that. Then number two, we have to surplus the bus and then we can decide, um, whether we want to sell it by bid, sell it on auction and move forward from there. So basically now we need to surplus it and decide how we want to sell the old bus.
Any actions from the council?
I make a motion to surplus it and instead of sealed bids, the date can be determined by now.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bow on.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right. We need a motion to move into executive section for economic development and personnel. All in favor? All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.